Well, seven o'clock. Are we ready to go?
Yeah.
You have resolutions in the clerk's office to sign to. There's two downstairs, but they're not being given out tonight. Are you ready? I'm going to call the City Council Caucus to Order for January 25th, 2016. Item number five has been pulled from the agenda for two weeks and we have no public hearings tonight. Under original consideration, Agenda item number one, if the clerk would please read.
Item number one, in ordinance, re-appropriating the 2015 budget, creating a budget line for sale of fire trucks.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent.
Item number two, in ordinance, re-appropriating the 2015 budget regarding Van Geisinger Avenue cleanup.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent.
Item number three, a resolution approving the fleet efficiency policy of the City of Schenectady.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent.
Item number four, a resolution approving the purchasing policy of the City of Schenectady.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent.
Item number five is pulled. Item number six, a resolution accepting the transfer of 2418 Campbell Avenue from Sura to the City of Schenectady.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a claim by Hatcher as guardian of Young v. City of Schenectady.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a claim by State Farm ASO McKern, property damage claim.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent.
Item number nine, a resolution recognizing the retirement of Tom Campoli.
This resolution is marking 37 years of service for Mr. Campoli, who is retiring, and this will be presented at another time without objection on consent.
Item number 10, a resolution recognizing 23 years of service to the city by Philip Dodge.
And this will be taken out of order. Mr. Riggi will present.
Item number 11, a resolution recognizing the Tri-City India Association and the Indian Community on Republic Day, 2016.
And Mr. Mutuveren will present this at an upcoming event being held at the Hindu Cultural Center in Albany. Discussed in committee without objection on consent.
Item number 12, a resolution recognizing city waste and recycling collection crews as first responders.
This will be taken out of order and Mr. Palamini will present. It's discussed in committee without objection on consent. If there's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus meeting, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Mr. Kosher is seconded by Mr. Mutuveren. All those in favor, aye were adjourned. I'll now call the City Council Meeting to Order for Monday, January 25th, 2016, and ask that you rise for the invocation from Reverend Carlos Caraballo of the Better Life Empowerment Center.
I'm going to ask you to please bow your heads. Jesus, we come before you this evening, recognizing you in everything that we do. We want to make a special invitation, the same way it was when you were invited to the wedding in Kana, where you created the first miracle of turning water into wine. We ask you to be with us tonight and do miracles among our lives. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen, amen.
I'll now ask Floyd Slater to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
.................................
If the clerk would read. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Kosher?
Here.
Ms. Porterfield? Mr. Ferrari is excused. Mr. Palamini? Mr. Riggi? Mr. Mutuveren? Ms. Parazzo?
Present. Our first out-of-order presentation of two tonight is a ceremonial resolution honoring 23 years of service to the city by Philip Dodge. I'll ask Mr. Riggi to present that, and for the first time ever, I believe, in the history of the City Council meeting, we'll be Skyping in our recipient, as he is now residing in Tennessee. So, welcome, Mr. Dodge. We're glad you can be here with us tonight. You have the floor.
Are you ready? Okay, so there you go. The resolution recognizing 23 years of service to the city of Philip Dodge, whereas Philip F. Dodge-
Started working for the City of Schenectady, has an elect engineering technician, one, on June 15th, 1992, and whereas he became an engineering technician, two, as of January 1st, 1994, and was promoted to Public Works Inspector on December 1st, 1994. And whereas, on April 9th, 2007, Phil became a junior civil engineer, a position he has held and served in faithfully for the past eight years. And whereas, on January 6th, 2016, after 23 years of service within the Engineering Department, Phil decided that it was in his best interest and the interests of his family to retire from his position. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Mayor Gary R. McCarthy and the City Council do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize Philip F. Dodge, junior civil engineer at the City of Schenectady and his 23 years of service. Madam Chair, I move this resolution.
Seconded by Mr. Mutuveren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. You are the first.
Want to say a few words?
No, thank you. I kind of miss it up there, but I'm glad it's not cold down here. It is up there.
You brought it with you, Phil.
All right, yes, what my wife said. All right.
Do you want to say anything?
No. No, I'm okay. You are the first, Phil. Someone that's behind in technology is the first to Skype. So, what is appropriate? Welcome to smart cities. Hope you enjoy yourself down there in Tennessee with your family. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Phil.
Congratulations. Next, we have a ceremonial resolution recognizing city waste and recycling collection crews and first responders, and I ask Mr. Palamini to present.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
You have the floor.
Whereas the city's waste crews operate with anonymity on a daily basis, and whereas, on January 8th, the crew of Sean Walker, Matt Anderson, and Keith Ongman, sorry, came upon an injured pedestrian who had struck, was, had been struck by a car on not terrace. And whereas Matt Anderson, having recently completed EMS training, applied compression to the pedestrian's wound, and whereas Sean Walker continued to apply compression to the wound, freeing Matt Anderson to immobilize the pedestrian's head and neck, guarding against further injury. And whereas Keith Ongman calmed the driver of the car and was able to give instructions to 911 personnel to bring medical aid to the site. And whereas, on December 23rd, 2015, the crew of Chris Casey, Richard Thomas, and Ed Quinones came to the aid of a woman on Broadway who stumbled in her doorway and broke her hip. And whereas, the crew immediately came to her aid, warming and comforting her. And whereas driver Chris Casey alerted 911, and whereas Floyd Slater, Assistant Solid Waste Supervisor, was later able to warm and comfort a woman until emergency medical personnel arrived. And whereas, a later conversation with the woman's grandson indicated that a life-threatening blood clot was discovered at the hospital, and the crew may have been responsible in saving her life. And whereas, these events may seem remarkable, they are simply two examples of the many situations encountered and resolved on a regular basis due to the vigilance of the city trash and recycling crew. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the City Council pause in their deliberations to thank the city's trash and recycling crews for their conscientiousness and committed approach to their work on a daily basis. I move this.
Seconded by Ms. Porterfield. All those in favor?
Aye.
We'd like to just thank you guys for the recognition, the City Council, the mayor. And these guys are just doing their jobs, so we appreciate it, but it was just another day.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Now we'll move to approval of the minutes from January 11th, 2016. Mr. Riggi moves. Mr. Mutuveren seconds. All those in favor? The clerk would read Communications and Petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, January 25th, 2016. Under official, there are none. Under general, there are none. Under petitions, there are none.
And on to Committee Reports. Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. I would first like to report that the Recreation Advisory Commission has started meeting again and is talking about looking at the parks to be designated to spend the $250,000 that has been allocated in this year's budget. The meeting took place last Thursday, and what the commission is looking to do to at least get six parks, as we did last year, and depending on how much it takes for each park. So, those meetings will be monthly, and people are welcome to submit their neighborhood park name if they are interested in having an upgrade or if an upgrade is necessary in their park. I'd also like to report that the Consolidate Funding Application to Rehab Orchard Park has been funded to the tune of $354,000, and that is part of the $1,278,000 total cost that's going to take to do the park. So, there isn't a timeline at this moment on when the work will get started, but the good news is that the funding has been received. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Mr. Palamini?
The Administrative Efficiency Committee is working on a employee recognition program, as we saw tonight, just two examples of many of great work that city employees do. We feel it's important that we recognize the tremendous work that the employees do for the city and for the public in large. As such, we're putting together a proposal. We're working closely with the Human Resources Department to finalize some of the documents and nomination processes that were brought out in the committee meeting last week, and we're going to hopefully have something in the next few weeks to get this finalized. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Committee reports? Okay. Privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have one person signed up, Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council, Mayor Proton. One of them is the purchasing. It should have been pulled and rediscussed. Last year, the Affirmative Action Committee did not even approve of the best value, and it's right back. This is a good opportunity to revisit that issue and actually take some of the recommendations from the Affirmative Action Committee. Also, too, is in the purchasing, is that we needed to tighten up on the professional services. What's the definition? It has been used so many times within contracts that have been going on for the last 11 years, under the professional services. It's a backdoorway of having no bid contracts. And, you know, we need to tighten some of this stuff up to actually have policies. Also, we've had RFPs, that where the staff has come out with RFPs, and the RFPs have come back to the City Council. We've already done it. You just got to prove it now. And you're saying, wait a minute. An example would be, we don't need 10 fire trucks. We may only need eight. But the fire department's come back saying, we need 20-inch hoses, not 15-inch hoses. So, a lot of this stuff, I'm just using those as examples, as a piece of what can be done. The RFP should be coming back to the City Council. Then the City Council should be given permission to do the RFP. And it's just not. And this is another way of looking at the purchasing contract, and it should have been held for another two more weeks or another four more weeks, and given a public hearing to it, and letting affirmative action come back with some more recommendations on the best value. It should have been pulled. Thank you.
Thank you. And no one else signed up to speak, so I will declare this portion of the meeting closed. I'll entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda. Mr. Kosher, seconded by Mr. Mutuveren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And move to privilege of the floor regarding general city business. I have four people signed up. Anthony Corata.
Good evening, Mr. Burnett, Madam President, Council. For I like to speak, I'd like to express my condolences to the mayor for the passing of his mother. Now, I'd like to talk about my experience with the ER in Ellis. Last Thursday, I went to the ER at 4:00, didn't leave until 11:30. Sure enough, I've been dealing with a pin driver in my lower back, and I've been having trouble walking, bending down, what have you. Why this is concerned is because I didn't see the doctor till about 9:30, and then you get the x-rays done until about quarter 10, 10:30. Now, one time in the city, we had two hospitals, Ellis and St. Clair's. Somewhere along the history of these two hospitals, something would have stayed for us to take over St. Clair's. So, now we have one mega hospital, then two ERs. Now we have one. See, like City Albany, you have about four or five hospitals with more than one ER, and of course, the VA Hospital in Albany. Here in the City of Schenectady, we have one ER for the entire city. Now, why is this concerned? Because you have a population of over 60 years, people 60 years and over here in the City of Schenectady, people dealing with severe illnesses and matters of life or death, like myself, type 2 diabetes. And we got to go to ER, only one, Ellis, over there on that street, and see a doctor on that, wait for a doctor on that, where we could be dealing with matter of life or death. I urge the council and the mayor, and look into matter of possibly getting another hospital or another ER within the city, to help ease the burden of the hospital there, the ER Ellis, because I know that hospitals and ERs get a little busy, and I've been watching medical shows like House, real-life medical shows, and I've been watching Code Black right now. And I know hospitals and ERs get a little busy, but you have one ER, one hospital, one ER in the city, Schenectady. We got to come up with something to help ease the burden here, because we got people with elderly and seniors, and people with severe illnesses and matters of life or death illnesses, and one hospital, one ER in the city? Come on. Time to start doing the jobs here, start to get another ER or something going on here, because it's going to be a little hard, especially when the morning must start swirling around and start getting colder.
Thank you. Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council, Mayor Proton. One of the things, you've still got another six, four weeks, you know, of your property taxes. Make sure you got your star put together. As Councilman Riggi mentioned, we definitely need to get the star put together. And utilize the claims that have been going on for the last four years as a way of getting your taxes, property assessment lowered. That shows that the City Council had lowered for the developers and the contractors and so forth, anywhere between 25% to 50% reduction on the property taxes. So, use these small claims as a way of getting your taxes, property assessment lowered. The more they're filed, the more that's going to have to force the city going to have to do the reassessment. We've got to get a reassessment done. And we have offered different alternatives, which is to divide the city up into five equal parts, and then do assessment in each one of the parts, and then rotate every five years. So, that way it keeps everything going. The reassessment needs to be done. Also, too, is that we've got construction season going out. We've got competitive biddings going for Public Works and everything else. I'm hoping the City Council will start looking at the minority and personal with disabilities participation rates. You know, these things are, this is the time we're going. And also, too, is the roundabout, the $3.2 million. There wasn't any minority or personal with disabilities put into place. And then, we're going to have the casino. You've guys have got to get on the ball of putting the policy procedures of how they're going to do it. There was a PLA agreement signed, and I tried to foil the information with the New York State Gaming Commission, and they refused and said that the affirmative action reports were proprietary, were confidential. Well, how the heck do you file for affirmative action for the PLA contracts, whether you're qualified or not? You got to be able to see the contracts. You got to be able to see what the policies are. And we learned from the Gazette that the governor vetoed any attorney fees for filing a claim against the state. So, taking the foiler request to the state, to court, you're not going to get anything back. So, we're stuck. So, this City Council's got to force the issue in requesting a copy of those PLA agreements, and it's on all three casinos. It's just not, not this one casino, but it's on all three of them. And so, we need to be able to make sure that we're getting those 30% plus, also with the person with disabilities, and getting the jobs. Thanks.
Thank you. Mary McLean.
I am outraged that the mayor would parade a General Electric CEO in front of this community after that company took away the medical coverage from all its retired veterans, my husband included. After the company made the announcement, I wondered why council did not take a position in support of its constituency. Now I know why. You had this man in the wings waiting to make the city smart. I would match my husband's brains with the mayor's CEO anytime. My family made a lot of sacrifices for the General Electric Company. My husband always held secret clearance. The company sent him every place and any place, and when he left the house, his plane ticket was rerouted so that I could not know where he was. A young mother at home with two toddlers, without the companionship of her husband, and the children who did not have their father at home to tuck them into bed at night and read them a bedtime story because GE needed his brain. And one of his projects is on exhibit in the Smithsonian Institution. And now, in our twilight years, when I need insulin as my lifeline, that company took away his medical coverage, a veteran who made the company's profits possible. Folks, greed is vulgar in corporate America. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy Hall.
I'm Joy Hall of Schenectady. I have a big issue here that Schenectady, the council should get, open up St. Clair's again, because you got people that live on this side of town. Got to go all the way over to Ellis? No. That should not be, because Ellis can't handle all of it. It's too much for one hospital to handle all, and you got to wait nine, 10 hours for help in the hospital? That's uncalled for. And there are too many, I see too many handicaps and diabetics and everything else with it. And I know what it is to have to deal with this and see it all the time. And they got to get St. Clair's emergency room opened back up.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I will declare this privilege of the floor closed. On to miscellaneous business of the council. Mr. Riggi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just on the hospital situation, it was the Berger Commission, I believe, that closed St. Clair's Hospital. Unfortunately, the City Council has nothing to say about that, but as a matter of fact, I was one that waited in the ER with a strangled hernia for many hours when they first closed it. It's just the way it is. But that was the state commission that decided that St. Clair should be closed. Just want to clarify that. Two announcements is what I have. Schenectady Little League's going to have their final registration on Saturday, February 27th, 11:00 to 2:00 o'clock in the afternoon, Boulevard Bowl on Erie Boulevard. They already had one on January 23rd, so Schenectady Little League, it's the one little league in the city right now, and it's nice if we can get the children to register and play. It's a very nice sport and very good for the history of Schenectady. Second one is the Jack Falvo. The Third Foundation is having another event. I guess the buffet was A1. I couldn't make it, but that's good. They're having a breakfast buffet fundraiser, Sunday, February 7th, at the Gilderland Elks, 3867 Carmen Road, Gilderland. 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. It's a great deal. All you can eat for $8. Children under eight years of age, $4. So, it's a great place, and it's all you can eat. So, you can belly up to the buffet bar there, and, okay. And it's for a good cause again, and the more we can do for this foundation, the better. It's better for Schenectady. Thank you.
Ms. Porterfield?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to also give condolences to the mayor for the loss of his mother, and also to my colleague John Ferrari and the last, the loss of his grandmother to him and his entire family. Just wanted to make a couple announcements about a few things that are going on this week throughout the city. First of all, on the 27th, which is Wednesday evening, there will be a forum on open government held at the Schenectady County Community College from 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM. The Daily Gazette will host this forum, and officials and citizens on open government and freedom of information, and it's featured Robert J. Freeman. So, the event is free and open to the public. A, these, this council gave a resolution when Superintendent Larry Spring was going to the state in terms of the funding, the disproportionate amount of funding that was received for the city school district. And this has come up again, and, or I should say, the fight goes on. And right now, there's being a petition that's going around to get 50,000 signatures to again go to the state to try to get the gap in funding that Schenectady should be receiving. So, there was a meeting held this past Saturday- in funding that Schenectady should be receiving. So there was a meeting held this past Saturday, and there are, there are ground troops out trying to round up the signature, want to make people aware if you're asked to sign the petition. Just to keep in mind, not only does it support our educational system, but could conceivably help lower the taxes, because the 62 million that we're missing wouldn't all go to the school system, because Superintendent Spring says that the school system really only needs 38%. So the additional could go to lower the school taxes. So that's something to keep in mind. It just doesn't apply to people who have children in school, but homeowners in the city as well. This Saturday, the 30th, the famed NFL running back Tony Nathan will appear live here for the showing of Woodlawn. It's going to be held at Schenectady's bowtie movie land. And it's a one-day showing, and it's a true story of a newly-integrated football team in racially torn and volatile Birmingham, Alabama. The tickets, let me just say, many aspects of the movie are team sports, which are popular in the capital region, and it's , and considering Schenectady's wonderful ethnic diversity and multicultural community, it's a good message. And that, that's a, that's a quote from Bobby Malozy, who is also helping to sponsor this, and it will support the mission, it encapsulates the mission of the Boys and Girls Club. And tickets are $10 for adults and $5 for children and senior citizens. And as I said, the star of the movie, Nathan, Tony Nathan, will, will appear live that day. And I believe that is it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mutiveren?
I just want to touch on the convenient fee being charged. We're now paying real estate taxes and, real estate taxes, and also the other municipal voucher. There have been some questions and some calls regards, why do we have to pay when using our credit card? And I just want to bring it to the attention to the public as to what is being charged for using your Visa credit, MasterCard, credit, or debit, or Discover card. There's a 2.5, 2.4% of the bill. And if you use your Visa debit card, there's a $2.95 for every $500 of your bill. And if you use an E-check, it's 50 cents. Same thing goes along. And this, this information is available on our website. So I encourage people to check our website. And when you're coming in, yes, there is a fee being charged now for using your credit cards when doing business with the city, especially they're paying taxes. And we are working on making it more accessible in terms of putting it on the front of the bill instead of the back. So that information will be out there in the next cycle of tax information going out. And there is no confusion. I encourage people who do not want to pay this fee, you can use your check. Use your check to pay and avoid this fee. But we're doing this and this. This is not making money for the city. This is just a pass through to the credit card company, but a fee that we've been encouraging all the years to offset this service. So I just want to make that clear to people. We're not trying to get revenue out for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Palamene?
On February 1st, there's going to be a sleep out for the homeless. Pastor James Bookout will sleep outside with some of his parishioners of the Bridge Church, Bridge Church on Crane Street. They will sleep in front of the Dream Center House for the homeless that they are putting together. They are going to need $50,000 extra to finish that house up for the homeless. And so if you're so inclined and able to make a donation, that I'm sure they will be very happy to receive that. Earlier, we were able to recognize the garbage crew. I think that's a, they do these things regularly. It's great that we have such committed staff and, and employees. One of the nice things that I've been able to do since the election is to work with a variety of the departments and do shifts with a variety of the, the crews that, that the city has. And I did do a shift with the garbage crew. They're a bunch of great guys. I don't believe there are any women on the garbage crew. But they work very hard, as do all the other crews that I was able to work with. And I can speak firsthand that the employees that we have are just tremendous, and we should be very proud as a city to have such wonderful employees and professional employees. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you. I'm sure that mayor's had some pretty memorable experiences in his political life here in Schenectady, but his trip to Washington DC for the conference of mayors turned into probably the biggest challenge he's ever faced. I have been in touch with him since the day he arrived down there, and lo and behold, the storm rolled in. Their activities were not completed. He had to stay through Friday afternoon for some very good reasons. And because of that, he was not able to come home, and he wasn't able to come home on Sunday. And, you know, the story goes on, and I'll let him tell you at, at his convenience, but that's the reason he isn't here. He's totally exhausted. He'll be fine. He'll bounce back by tomorrow. But please extend your understanding to what turned out to be the trip from hell for the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to follow up on the young lady that spoke for the ceremonial resolution to recognize epilepsy awareness month. After seeing her speak at the council meeting, they encouraged her to apply, and she is now the child spokesperson for the Epilepsy Foundation of Northeastern New York. And I think it was very well deserved. She was very poised and very excited for a nice opportunity. Also, a recent article in the Gazette reported that our home sales in 2015 showed a 17% increase, and I think that's certainly something to be celebrated. And lastly, happy birthday to Center City, which is, has just turned five, which I don't know where the time went, because it feels like just yesterday. But some interesting facts. Prior to development, Center City was vacant for the most part, empty retail and office space. The building generated about $10,000 a year in property taxes. In total, the Gillespie Group invested over $30 million, along with Metroplex funds and a $2.5 million Restore New York grant. Tenants in the building now include ME Engineering, NBT Bank, AAA Northway Headquarters, SCCC's Downtown Campus, Schenectady YMCA, CVS, Wink, Johnny's, Adecco, Rush Street Gaming, Metroplex, and Assemblyman Santa Barbara's District Office. But there's more than 250 people that work in the building, 1,400 students that take classes at SCC, and the new Y has 5,200 members, and that's up from 1,800 when they were down the street. But most importantly, to me anyway, the building pays more than $300,000 in property taxes, which is 30 times more than it paid when it was vacant. So once again, happy birthday, much to celebrate for all of our development in the city as a whole, but certainly in this case, Center City. So with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Mr. Reggie, and a second, Mr. Mutiveren. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.